Free that. Hur. Port. Hur. Left. Hur. Forward. Hur.
Please remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem by our very own Register of Deeds, Diane Badiato.
Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Legion Post Number One, and Diane Badiato. In honor of Veterans Day, which is celebrated on Friday, November 1st, we are having a special recognition program this morning in honor of our Douglas County employees who have been called up to active duty from their employment with the county from November 2007 to the present. We have previously recognized our employees called up for active duty in November of 2007. Before we start the program, I would like to introduce the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Douglas County hereby recognizes its employees who are members of the military and have been called up to active duty in the defense of our country with service in Iraq and Afghanistan and related military action in the time period of November 2007 to the present, whereas on September 11th, 2001, fundamentalist Islamic terrorists coordinated a series of attacks on the United States of America inflicting mass casualties; and whereas in response to this horrific act, many young men and women joined the U.S. military to serve and defend the liberties and freedoms of our great nation; and whereas our employees and selfishly placed himself or herself in arms' way to fight against terrorism and to secure and support those nations seeking independence from terrorism; and whereas this board is desirous of showing its appreciation to those Douglas County employees who have given of themselves in service to their country. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board commends our employees for his or her service of duty in the United States military and for his or her actions in the preservation of the United States of America dated this first day of November, 2011. And at this point, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you. And at this time, I would ask Mr. Lee Legere to come to the podium. Mr. Legere has been instrumental in putting the program together, and he'll continue the program.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgensen. Today, we'd like to recognize the following individuals and ask them to come forward when their name is called to the podium to Commissioner Borgensen, as she will present them with their recognition of thanks for their military service. There are some of our employees who are unable to be here today, but we will also call their name. We also have three of our employees who are still on active duty, Peter Pennucci, Michael Rowe, and Juan Vidal of the Corrections Department, and we will recognize them when they return from active duty. We ask them to give them applause at this time and look forward to their safe return. And we'll now recognize the following individuals, and I will call their name. We'd like to recognize Mr. Gordon Brown. Gordon is a juvenile detention specialist with the Youth Center, and he currently serves in U.S. Army. He is a Command Sergeant Major E-9, and he served with the 504th Military Police Battalion, Camp Ashra, Iraq.
You can have that. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Yes. Next individual we want to recognize is Andrew Eiler from the Corrections Department. And Andrew is a Corrections Officer in the Department of Corrections. He serves with the Nebraska Army National Guard and is a second lieutenant. During military service, called up active duty with A Troop, 1st of the 134th Cavalry, reconnaissance and surveillance in Kabul, Afghanistan. We would next like to recognize Alan Welch. Alan is a sergeant with the Douglas County Corrections Department. He serves in the U.S. Army Reserves. He's a Master Sergeant, and he served with the 561st Regional Support Group in Baghdad, Iraq from September 9th to June 2010. And we'd like to recognize Brian Christensen, who works for the Engineering Department of the Douglas County Engineer. He's a CAD Detailer. He serves in the Naval Reserve, and he's an E-5 Second Class Petty Officer, and he served with the Naval Expeditionary Logistics Support Group in Camp LSA Ali As Salam Air Base in Kuwait. We'd next like to recognize Danny Coleman, who's Environment Health Services Supervisor in the Pest Control, Housekeeping in the Douglas County Health Center. He serves in the United States Army. He's a Master Sergeant E-8. He served with the 561st RSG Group in Iraq. We'd like to recognize Mr. Randy Popino from the Treasurers Office. If Randy was able to be here this morning, we'll make sure he gets his recognition certificate. From the Sheriff's Office, we have a number of individuals. I'm not sure if they're all able to be here today, but Jerome Bogonowski, Corey Cooper, Brian O'Malley, Robert Rogers, Scott Kozminski. Okay, let's thank them for their service. And I think we got everybody. If anyone we left out, hopefully not. Okay. We'd like to thank the Directors of our county offices who provided assistance to these employees during activation and return from active duty. We'd like to recognize Mark Foxhall, Director of Corrections, Brad Alexander, Director of the Youth Center, Jim Turgo, Director of the Health Center, John Ewing, Douglas County Treasurer, Tom Dahl, Douglas County Engineer, and Tim Dunning, Douglas County Sheriff. Let's give them a round of applause. And with this month being, having Veterans Day, we'd also like to recognize all our veterans in the audience today, and as if they please stand, give them a round of applause. And to wrap things up, we'd like to thank the members of the American Legion Post Number One for the presentation of colors, and the Honorable Diane Badiato Redshirt Dees for singing the National Anthem. And also, a great deal of thanks goes to Commissioner Marion Borgensen, whose idea was to recognize these employees, Kathy Kelly, Karen Cole, Sharon Burke of the County Administration Office, and Chris Salisbury of Human Resources, and Bernie Brosenhane, our Director of the Douglas County Veteran Service Office, for their assistance in this program. Give them a round of applause. And to close our recognition, we'd last ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, and to the justice of all.
We'd like to thank everyone for coming, and this concludes our recognition program.
Thank you very much, and again, congratulations to all of you, and thank you for your service. At this time, I would ask that we recess out of the Board of Commissioners meeting and go into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Second. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll, or roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 25th, 2011. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 15th, 2011, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. We have four resolutions for approval. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I have a question. About, on D, the CAC 11225. I sent an email, my email was down for the county, so I don't know if there was a response. I assume there was, but this is on Intercessors of the Lamb Incorporated, and I know that we had denied the exemption, and I was, I just wanted to get an explanation of this because on the information that's on the computer, if I can get this thing to move down here, I'll tell you what I was asking about. The, I wanted to know if you could, Mr. Goodwill, he could tell us a little bit about what property this is and what addresses it is. This will relate to, in a couple of minutes, the county treasurer has exemptions for motor vehicles that includes Intercessors of the Lamb, and I understand there's only 11 people up there. I don't know how many cars they have, and I'm just curious what's going on there, how many houses were taken out.
Commissioner Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessor's Office, this is one of the, I think, eight off-campus properties that were residential dwellings that were taken off the tax rolls. This is the first one that we have gotten through and gotten a value on. The remaining seven are in the pipeline and will come to you in meetings between now and the end of the year.
Okay.
As far as cars, we don't do cars. I have no idea.
Okay, we don't do windows either, so we know what you mean. But this is the address, excuse me, is 11706 North Post Road.
Right, it's one of the off-campus houses.
Okay, all right, well, that answers my question. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Did we not say that the ones that were off-campus were not going to?
Yes, the remaining buildings are still sort of in the pipeline, getting a value number and getting on the board agenda. This was just the first one that got done.
So we are denying this today?
You guys already have. This is merely putting the value on it.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
And you will get the remainder between now and the end of the year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Before you leave, I wanted to ask, I'm a little bit confused because there's about, there's a bunch of people, I'm sorry about my throat, some people who have left and are around at St. Bridgetts and St. Anthony's and are moving to St. Mary's Convent, and are they, I don't know if you know this or not, but are they the Intercessors of the Lamb, or is the group that stayed there? I thought they had a different name.
You know, it's a good question. I guess the last I had heard, there were still some holdouts sort of in the campus, but if there were, if there are as many as there were before, I'm not entirely certain.
Okay, well, the basis of my question, I don't know that you can get to it or not as the assessor, but we're placing this property on the tax rolls, and we're saying that the owner is Intercessors of the Lamb Incorporated, and I'm not sure that's who the owner is.
We are sort of at the mercy of what's at the Register of Deeds office, to be quite candid. We have neither the staff nor the ability to, you know, do some super sleuthing and find out if the organization has gone away. If we, if we get anything from the Register of Deeds office, a 521, a copy of a deed, anything like that, that indicates that the title has changed, then it will change in our records, and I suppose those are the clerks as well.
Okay, well, and that's probably, that is what happens, but I'm just, I'm curious about it because I don't think, I don't know who they are anymore or where they are, or how many there are, and I'm just.
See, if memory serves, the corporate headquarters may be in Cincinnati, Ohio or someplace. They may still have some, they may have still status as a corporation. They just may not have very many members here.
Well, I looked them up at the Secretary of State, and at one time, they were incorporated, they are incorporated, or should say were, under this name and address that was in that area. So, it's something you can't answer, but I appreciate the information. Thank you.
No other questions or comments? There's a motion to approve Resolutions D, E, F, and G.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Duda? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say, the Intercessors are still present up on their campus where they always were, and, yeah, these are the properties that they own, that their guests stay in frequently or some of their staff.
Yeah, well, I don't think they're able to use that name anymore.
I'm not aware of any name changes.
Okay, well, I don't think they've changed, they're calling themselves something else now.
All right.
And the people who are Intercessors of the Lamb, I think, have moved to St. Bridgetts. So, anyhow, whatever that's worth. There is one other thing I wanted to ask about, and that is, under the Treasurers, under G, approving application for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for approval. There are two vehicles in there that are Intercessors of the Lamb again, and I asked Mr. Kavanaugh, the Deputy Treasurer, if he could tell me what's going on, and he gave me some information that frankly, I couldn't quite understand, so I asked him to come, and if you tell us, I mean, how many vehicles are there, how many vehicles, and you know how many people, it's not your job to know how many people are there, but, I mean, I've been reading in the World Herald that there's like 12 people there, and I, do you know how many cars are registered there that are exempt?
Tim Kavanaugh, Treasurers Office, we show that there are six that are currently registered now. There are two on the agenda for today, which would make eight, and we show that there's two that have an expired registration, that they have not made application for renewal on those. We have articles in incorporation and a letter of good standing from the Secretary of State.
Okay.
We received a December 3rd of 2010, and it's good for two years.
Okay.
Under the name Intercessors of the Lamb.
Okay, so you think they have eight vehicles there?
It appears they have at least eight, yes, unless they are still driving the ones that are expired.
Okay, and you have a list of those. Would those be available to anybody, or are they privileged?
No, they're not for public release. They're protected.
Why is that?
They're state statute regarding motor vehicle registrations. They're not the same as real estate records.
Okay, but even nonprofit where they don't pay any taxes, or, excuse me, tax exempt, they're not public information?
It's my understanding that motor vehicle registrations are still protected.
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate the information, so I think, you know, putting together the puzzle, the last World Herald article I read said there were 11 people there, and now they've got eight cars that are exempt. So, I just want to keep our eyeballs on these things because there's things changing.
I just want to let you know, the addresses on these are 11811 Calvin Road.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much, Tim. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha. Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 25th, 2011, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, November 8th, 2011. The complete listing is on file in the Office of the County Clerk and Controller, and Item C, the exception for dot com.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Next is a consent agenda. Items A, B, C, D, and E, I'm going to have E taken separately, so the motion would be to approve A through D.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Just a moment, please. Okay. Motion passes.
Item E is a resolution to set the salaries of the Douglas County Election Commissioner and the Chief Deputy Commissioner for the period of 2012 to 2015. In your packet, there was a resolution setting that for a 2% increase for the next four years, and after talking to commissioners, there was the thought that there would be a 0% increase for the first two years and a 1% the last two years, and I would just open that up for discussion at this point. Commissioner Boyle?
I, it's too bad that the election commissioner is up today and has been voted on today. We're in a situation where we have a lot of really good people who are doing, I think, an excellent job, and Mr. Phipps is one of those, and his deputy as well, but we're in a real tight fix here. I would like, I think both of them deserve more money than they're being paid, but today's economy says that's not going to happen, and I think what we're doing, I just want to mention my thoughts about this. I've talked to other commissioners, too, and that our salary, which we're going to be setting in December, I think should be zero for all four years, no increase at all, and I think others feel the same way, and I don't know how this is going to affect the other elected officials, but I would not like to see us blast Mr. Phipps with 00 and 11 for four years if we're going to turn around and give elected officials, you know, 4 and 3%, and all that kind of thing. If we vote this, I'm not going to be voting for any increases over 0011 for any elected official, and I'm not voting for any increase for us. So I just want to state that's where I am, so everybody get ready, grab your chairs.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, sir. And I'm going to be a little more extreme than Commissioner Boyle. I'm not going to vote for any increase for any elected official or for ourselves.
Okay.
I think we need to hold the line. The public expects us to hold the line, and even though, when you compare us to other counties, our elected officials many times are underpaid, but we choose to be elected. We seek out these positions knowing that we are going to be underpaid, and we do it because we are public servants. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I support exactly what you have said, Commissioner Boyle. You and I've had some discussion about this, and I totally, 100% support it. I also just want to say that I, and I've said it privately to some of the other commissioners, I think Mr. Phipps does an outstanding job and his staff, but at this time, I think that's what we have to do, and the other thing we need to all be aware of is that sometimes employees may think there's not an increase, but our benefits and other matters concerning those employees are increasing substantially, the benefits, so there is some benefit there that you may not see exactly in your salary, but the insurance costs and other things are increasing, so I would support, I don't know if you made a motion on that or not.
I'll make it a motion.
I would second your motion.
That was for 0011.
0011, okay, and you seconded that?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I view this as a reasonable compromise, and I'll be supporting it. It's tempting to just keep saying zeros all across for the leadership. When I came onto the county board, we had been at 0% increases for, I think, about six years in a row, and then you end up trying to play catch-up if you freeze salaries too long. If we were to freeze Mr. Phipps' salary for four years, his staff's salaries aren't frozen, they're going up. I have yet to see us approve a union contract at a 0% increase. The employees are moving up and will continue to move up, and I think it is important to keep the leadership at least creeping up, and 0011 is not exactly going to make anybody rich, but it is creeping up, and that's what I think is appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, everybody's point they made was good. I'm going to vote against it because I think it should be, too. I don't think the public is particularly saying anything about salaries. I think the public is saying, you know, can you control costs? And I think we've proved that. The 2% in the salary is not going to break the bank, and, you know, I just think we've proved, we've proved that we can control costs. It's not a fact about people getting paid, and I don't think they're extravagantly getting paid, so I just wanted that for the record. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
You know, I think his salary's about $80,000 a year, so we're going to give him $800 a year in the last two years, so, I mean, it's really, really low. I'd like to, and this came on pretty fast because this is the deadline to set his salary, which is unfortunate, but, so we don't have a lot of time to talk about things, but I'd like to ask legal counsel, is there, is it possible for us, and I'm already looking toward other elected officials as well, is it possible for us to say 0% this year and then cost of living for the rest of the years? Is it possible to plug that in because it's an unknown figure? Is that possible?
It really has to be tied to a known figure, so you'd have to have some sort of independent consumer price indexing or something like that.
Somewhat independent.
The Consumer Price Index or the...
We couldn't tie it to that?
You possibly could, yes, because at least that's an independent fixed amount that you can point to. If you just save cost of living and then come up with a cost of living yourself next year, you can't do that.
So we could say 0% and then use the CPI for year two, three, and four?
I think you could do that. I don't know if the CPI, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's, if it's increasing. I don't know if it's what it's set at, but...
Anything?
Well, I'd like to do something like that. I think it's more reasonable, but I'll go with what my motion is.
Commissioner Kraft? Okay. No other lights are on? The motion on the floor is to set the election commissioner and chief deputy salary for the next four years at 0% 2012, 0% 2013, 1% 2014, and 1% 2015. Please vote.
You'll be able to afford a Godfather's Pizza.
The motion passes.
With that, we'll move to citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have a presentation today, Behavioral Health, Criminal Justice, and Homelessness: Intersection Between Systems, and this will be presented by Dr. Shenabou Watanabe-Galloway, and if you would like to just come to the podium. Do you have a flash drive? Glenn will help you. Thank you. While they're getting that ready, also in the audience today is our Executive Director for our Mentory Continuum of the Care with the Homeless, Erin Porterfield.
Yes.
And this presentation, a couple of us have seen already, but it was so impressive and the data is so right on as to what we talk about in our criminal justice areas and behavioral health and the homeless that I thought it was important for all of us to see the information. Shinobu, if you would just state your name, address, and who you're with.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Shinobu Watanabe-Galloway. I am Associate Professor in College of Public Health, University of Nebraska Medical Center. Thank you so much for inviting me today to present this information. So I'd like to present to you the findings from the study I completed for Department of Health and Human Services a while ago. But before I present to you the local data, which is the data from Nebraska, I'd like to put us in the national context so we know what we already know from the national data. So this is not a news to many of us. We know it's been a problem to see overlapping population between the behavioral health and criminal justice system. So there have been a number of studies being done. And this is the national data. We know probation number has gone up disproportionately compared to other groups of correctional population. But as you can see, prison, parole, jail, all of them have been increasing over the years. And this is the national picture. And this is also from the national study that was done to understand what is the situation in the federal prison, state prison, and local jail. So this shows for both mental health, MH, and substance use disorder. In federal prison, about 13% of them have these conditions. And slightly higher in state prison and local jail, over about 25%. Individuals with only mental health disorders is lower, but still substantial, about 7% to 9%. But what we really pay attention to is those people who have substance use disorder, disorder only with a mental health. That is about 40% across the board. And the remaining people do not have either condition. So those are the numbers shown in the last row of 25% to 39%. So what this tells us is, this is a national issue, that we have a lot of individuals in the correction system who have mental health problems, substance use disorders, and dual disorders. That's the term we often use, is to show people who have both mental health and substance-related disorders. So I just completed a six-year project with Behavioral Health Division of Department of Health of Nebraska. And in the past two years, we were able to come to the agreement with criminal justice system so we can start looking at their data. And what we did was to merge the data from Behavioral Health Division and criminal justice system to see what might be the overlap between those two systems in terms of people who have the mental health problem and then also being served in the correctional system. When I say behavioral health, it includes both mental health-related problems such as schizophrenia, major depression, bipolar disorders. When I say, and then also includes substance abuse disorder. So I just wanted to make sure about the terminology before I proceed to the slides. So, as I said, we integrated the data from jails, prisons. We did not come to the agreement to use the probation data. So the numbers that I'm reporting to you are probably underestimated because we do not have the probation data. But nevertheless, we have the big chunk of data from jails and prisons. And from Department of Health and Human Services, we have the data from the regional centers, three regional centers, and data about individuals who have been receiving the care in a community setting. So those are the data. One of the major findings from this study was that there is a large percentage of inmates who have used state-funded mental health or substance abuse program in a community setting at least once in five-year study period. We had the data from the five years. So that is, let me see, the data period of January 1, 2005 through 2009, that's the data period we look at. So one in three prison inmates, they have received a care for mental health or substance abuse-related program funded by the state. And one in five jail inmates have been the consumer of such service at least once in five-year study periods. So that's one way to look at what is overlap between two systems. And jail admissions are very common among mental health substance abuse consumers. During the five-year study period, about half of consumers had at least one jail admission. So in the picture, this is what we know. The red circle is the number of people who have been to, who have been to any community behavioral health program in the five-year period. That is 68,000 people. Overlapping population is 3,682. So those are the people who have been to community behavioral health program and prison. Because regional center population is much smaller, overlap is much smaller. Prison and the regional center overlap was 258. But because the jail population is relatively large, of 144 individuals, these are the unduplicated number of individuals who have been to jail at least once in a five-year period. Many of them have been to jail multiple times. But these are the unduplicated numbers. Overlap between community-based behavioral health program population and jail is about 32,900, close to 33,000, which means from jail perspective, one in five individuals at least have mental health problem or substance abuse. And from community behavioral health program perspective, that is 50% of individuals who have been to jail. Okay, lastly, jail and regional center overlap is small, again, because of the regional center population being much smaller than a community-based program. But however, if you look from regional center perspectives, that is 50% of people still overlapping, which means one in two individuals who has been cared by regional center setting, they have been to jail at least once in five years. So what these pictures tell us, the numbers tell us, is just to set the baseline of what we know about the overlapping cross-sectional information that we know. Now, I'd like to proceed to report to you findings from the second study we did. It is the same data set we used, but we looked at the data differently. As I mentioned to you, we have five years worth of data from 2005 through 2009. What we did was to look at or established a group of individuals. These are unduplicated consumers, behavioral health consumers, who received service because they had mental health or substance abuse program, problem in 2007. And we looked back and looked forward to see who had criminal justice encounter before and after the admission to service for mental health or substance abuse. One of the main findings from this part of the study was that criminal justice encounter differed substantially depending on the type of consumers. When I say type of consumers, I mean what type of services they received. Among consumers who only received mental health service, criminal justice encounter was 30%. But that number went up when we look at those consumers who have substance abuse-only problem and receive the service. That went up to 70%. Among those consumers who had both mental health and substance abuse, the number, the percentage is slightly higher, 72%. So this tells us a risk population, at least within those individuals receiving state-funded services. We can really point out to see who might be at higher risk of getting arrested. And this is partly because of the nature of the crime. You can imagine those individuals who have substance abuse problem, they might be arrested because of their addiction and, you know, some other things related to that. But nevertheless, the difference is huge. So in the picture, this is what we are looking at. Among those people who were the consumers of mental health service only, 70% of them did not have any criminal justice admission before or after 2007. 3% of them had prison and jail admission. And 27% of them had jail admission only. And very small percentage, 0.1%, they had prison-only admission. And if you look at the difference in the green part, those are the no criminal justice admission. The size of the green space gets smaller as we look at the substance abuse-only and the dual consumer. So that's what I was talking about in the previous slide. Okay. So we're trying to quantify a little bit about, because I mentioned to you, some of these consumers have multiple admissions to criminal justice system. We wanted to see what percentage of these individuals across these three groups had both before and after criminal justice encounter. Again, 2007 being the anchor. We see the difference again. So again, looking at the green space here, meaning the no criminal justice admission is much higher among people with only mental health problem compared to other groups. And we look at the number of criminal justice admission. This is combined prison and jail admission. Among those consumers who received a care for mental health problem, 70% of them, zero admission. 11% of them, one admission and so on and so forth. But this pattern is very different for substance abuse-only consumers and dual disorder consumers. About one in four individuals with dual diagnosis, they had more than six admissions over the five-year period. And the percentage is 20% for substance abuse-only consumers. So it's not only that these individuals are more likely to be arrested, be into jail or prison, but they're more likely to have the multiple admissions. So these are really the frequent users of criminal justice system. I'd like to skip a few slides because the presentation gets longer otherwise, so this is the same information. I present it here. Lastly, we examined other characteristics related to criminal justice encounter. And this is not a rank ordering. Just wanted to tell you, this just is a listing of what are the characteristics of individuals who are likely to be arrested, be into jail, or to prison. And these are the characteristics. Younger individuals are more likely to have criminal justice encounter. Racial ethnic minority individuals, they're more likely. Males, more than likely compared to females. Those with substance abuse problem, dual diagnosis. Those with lower educational attainment. Those without private insurance. Those without job. And those who are homeless. These are the characteristics that predict people who might, who are more likely to be into the criminal justice system. So with this, with these findings, just wanted to restate some main points I want to communicate to you all, is that overlapping population is substantial when we look at the Nebraska-wide data. 22% of jail and 33% of prison inmates have used community-based mental health or substance abuse service at least once in five-year period. We need to address treatment needs while people are in prisons or jail. It's not that we can turn on and turn off, you know, the problem we have. So how best we can provide the care to those people who are already in the system so they have, they are able to transition if they, and when they go back to the community. So the linkage between mental health, substance abuse, and prison and jail system is far most important issue to be addressed. Individuals with substance abuse and those with dual diagnosis are more likely to have criminal justice encounters compared to individuals with only mental health problems. Needs for more targeted approach in reducing criminal justice encounter among these groups is important. I know that locally, that we do screening to find out who have mental health problems. But it seems that we need to pay attention to not just the mental health problem. Again, those include, you know, schizophrenia, bipolar problem, and so on. But also, we need to pay attention to screening and detection of substance abuse problems and then also the dual diagnosis. The third point is that although our study completed in September, and there is no plan, as far as I know, at the state level to continue this type of study, I feel very strongly about the need for continued data sharing between behavioral health and criminal justice system, as well as somebody independent of those system to be able to monitor the situation. So if there is any new intervention, for example, jail diversion program to be implemented in the future, we are able to evaluate how effective that would be. So it is very important that independent party is, to be able to look at these data and be able to report back to you at the local level, such as for Douglas County or at the state level, so we can understand the trend and know what we need to be doing. I had Assistant Kate Watkins- I had Assistant, um, Kate Watkins, who is not here today, analyze the data. So just wanted to acknowledge her work. And thank you again for, uh, this opportunity to present the findings from our study.
Thank you, um, Shenaboo. And there...
There are a couple lights on. This, to me, just validates what we, um, know within our jail, uh, population over at corrections, both in the community, uh, pro- correct, community correction programs and in the jail. But, um, I think we've done a very good job. More work needed, but giving our, um, doing the diversion, doing, um, the homeless program that we're doing in the jail, trying to identify those individuals upfront and then get them connected upon discharge, and then increasing our mental health services the last few years. But obviously, your point well taken that the substance abuse, um, we probably need to take a little bit, uh, harder look at that piece of it. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. Um, on the slide that says National Data Two, which I think was your third slide.
Okay.
Uh, there's a discrepancy between the number of people, um, let's see, yeah, if you go back to it. Okay, uh, next one back, I think. No, no, that's the one. Federal prison, you have 13 percent. State and local jails, you have 25 percent. In both mental health and substance use disorder, why are there, why is there that 10 percent discrepancy between the two? Why would it not be equal or similar?
Well, that I do not have answer at this point, but I'm happy to, uh, look over the study findings. This is not the study I did, so...
Okay, 'cause I find that very interesting. And then you talk on another slide about, uh, the mental health and substance abuse contacts funded by the state. Shouldn't we include those privately funded through insurance or through their families in the data?
Well, the study was, uh, sponsored by, uh, Behavioral Health Division of State and Health, um, Health and Human Services. And they only had these data. So they do not have the data on individuals who are not receiving.
Well, I, I know it'd be very difficult to get the data, even if you surveyed the prisoners or the people with contact, just because many of them won't admit to being privately treated. But it is, I believe, relevant in how we look at these numbers. See, I'm not disputing the numbers at all.
Ee.
And I'm not disputing the study. I believe it was done the way it was directed to be. I'm just saying that it's more pervasive, um, yes, much more, much deeper than this. So I appreciate it. This was very enlightening. Thank you.
If I may comment on that, um, most of the people who have serious mental illness, they cannot hold the, the job. And, uh, a lot of them do not have private insurance. So we capture the individual if they at least once use state-funded program. So they might be getting the care, uh, from the private insurance, but most of the people that we might be interested in, at least the overlapping population, who are less likely to have the private insurance only. We think, uh, the data is pretty accurate, but your point is well taken. This is underestimated, not overestimate.
Right, thank you. I, uh, that's what I understand. There's, there's one other point I'd like to make, and of course, people with substance abuse are going to have higher encounters because they're going to be, there's the need to fund their substance abuse so they commit crimes. And, um, you know, really, we need to concentrate hard. Some of the things we do that are non-funded mandates, address that, such as the drug court. And, um, I think we need to find more ways of addressing it and preempting it. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle, did you not have your...
I was going to ask, or make a comment about the, my theory about why the local jail was higher than the federal. I, I think some of the people who are, um, you know, um, in federal prison are people who are, uh, not necessarily, um, substance abuse people. I think they're drug dealers and things like that that are maybe abusing drugs, but they're, um, on a higher level, they're doing things that the local jail people are, people on the street who are stealing a bicycle, doing stupid things. And, uh, so they're, they're the people who end up in the local jail and they're the ones who have the, but I think the federal prison people are a little bit more sophisticated, I guess. And that's the way I would, you know, and I'm, I feel a little awkward saying this. We got the county attorney in the audience, we've got the director of our corrections, but, uh, that's kind of what I think. And I, I'm really, I appreciate, this is really a fascinating study that you've done, and I want to thank Mr. Borgson for bringing it to us. And I, and I'd like to see, uh, some kind of a connection, excuse me, between what you've done and, uh, further discussions with our corrections people and, um, maybe the county attorney as well. This is really good information. I was really impressed with the listing. I know it had no particular significance, but the factors that lead to these, you know, my thought is, and I think the thought of most of the county board is, and probably you as well, is that we need to step, uh, back there and try to prevent these things from happening. You know, the homelessness and the, all those things, uneducated and so forth, that that's where we need to focus so many more things to try to prevent these, rather than letting them happen and then trying to figure out what to do afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roger?
I just wanted to note to your point, Commissioner Boar, um, I think it's fair to say, you know, Aaron, Mr. Borgson, myself, that the Second Chance Grant money that we got, as far as the planning, this is the third time I've seen, and she presented to that group that we have for reentry. So I, I think it's definitely a part of that planning process that'll come down.
Okay. Uh, thank you for being here today, Shenaboo and Aaron. And we'll keep, uh, I, I hope that we do find, um, the possibility to continue the data sharing, uh, the end of this study on. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and I imagine you...
So you've seen it three times. Each time you see this...
Oops. I imagine each time you see this that you get more out of it too, don't you?
Oh, yeah, definitely. She, from the last time I saw it, she added the recommend, I didn't see the recommendation pieces develop the last time.
Yeah, it was an excellent study, so. Mary Ann, Professor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move to public hearings. There is a application G-1111. It's a request for revised zoning regulation, um, for, um, the Douglas County Environmental Services. Zoning district permitted use by zoning district commercial uses designated recreation of vehicle sales and storage as special use and mixed use to zoning district. The applicant is the Douglas County Environmental Services. The Planning Commission considered this application on October 12th and recommended approval. Action can be taken today after the public hearing is over. Hi, Cam.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Home Director of Environmental Services. Just to back up just a little bit, the two applications, uh, up for public hearing today are, are really kind of combined and come as a package. Based on the discussion at the Planning Commission meetings, uh, this, this past month, uh, the, the discussion really centered on, on the appropriateness of, of rezoning to be able to accommodate the use that was being proposed. And based on the discussion, uh, we came to the conclusion that it was better for us to come and, and create a new use category for special use in this MU2 zoning, so there would not be a rezoning per se. And so that's what's presented today, is to, first off, create the, the designation of a special use, uh, for this particular, for particular use category, which is recreation vehicle sales and storage in the MU2 district. And so recommend your approval there. And then following this for the second public hearing is the actual special use and, and the conditions that go along with that. So first off, recommend your approval of the, uh, the change to our zoning regulations to allow that special use in that particular zone district.
Commissioner Boyle?
The, um, I really want to speak to the second, uh, item, but, uh, why are we doing this? It's, uh, it seems like, um, I mean, what are we doing? Creating a, a place to park vehicles and storage or something? I, I don't understand.
This is, this is a particular zone, this is a particular use category.
Right.
The, the vehicle sales and recreation vehicle sales and storage is a use category defined in our zoning regulations. And right now, it is not a, is not designated as a special use within this particular zone district. So that's what we are creating. Based on the discussion with the Planning Commission, they felt that it was better not to try to rezone this, because originally we were trying, we had recommended that the applicant go to an MU3 district where it would have been a special use. Uh, this is simply a reflection of the Planning Commission's, uh, discussion there and the discussion with, and the concerns that were brought up there. It made more sense to create this particular, uh, special use in this particular district rather than do a rezoning. So this is why it's being presented this way.
Do you see this, uh, zoning being used anywhere else in Douglas County?
Oh, certainly could be, yes.
Well, um, I, I was going to try to drive out yesterday, but I didn't get a chance to. But how, how close is this to, um, that golf course that's had its history with all the difficulty with the owner not maintaining it? How close is that to this? Any...
Uh, I want to say, I want to say this is at least a mile.
West?
At least a mile west, at least.
Well, there was a, this, I, I guess this, maybe I better save these remarks for the next one, but, um, I don't know, I, I, uh, I, I don't really like it, but I, so I don't know how I'm going to, I probably won't vote for it, 'cause I, I, uh, I dislike the applicant, the next one, so, so much, that I think it's such a, it looks like a very inappropriate use for that area. I mean, to me, to me, it looks like just a big junkyard with a fence around it. That's what it looks like it's going to turn out to be. So that's, unless I, you know, I don't know what else it's going to be, but it's got so many restrictions on it. I'll quit talking, you can do what you want to do.
Are there any other individuals in the chamber that would like to speak on this item? Either for or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And what is the will of the board on the application G-1111?
Question approved.
Excuse me, is this, uh, this is A? Okay, excuse me.
It's just the first.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion passes.
The next public hearing is the application SPU-111. This is a special use permit for recreation vehicle storage and maintenance. The, uh, location is 262nd and West Center Road, Orion Land Management. The Planning Commission considered this application on September 28th and recommended approval. Uh, this is the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, we can take action today.
Again, Kent Home Director of Environmental Services. The application in front of you lists, in the resolution lists, a number of conditions that go with the special use. All of those, with the exception of the last one, were recommended by staff as being conditions for this special use. Uh, the Planning Commission also wanted to, to add the, the condition of a landscape plan. We've reviewed that and, and find that acceptable, uh, as to what has been submitted. And, uh, at this point, I'll address any questions you have.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, um, it's alarming to me to see, uh, 10 restrictions put on a special use permit. I think we're asking for, we're asking for trouble. Uh, I mean, if this is such a good deal, um, it should probably have one or none. And it just, for example, the first thing, how can we enforce, uh, number one, the special use permit applies only to the applicant? Uh, I mean, to me, that is a, uh, would certainly restrict the sale of this, um, if he goes to sell it in 10 years and he says, "Well, you know, this whole place only, only applies to me. You have to go in and try to get a permit yourself." I mean, I don't know if we can do that. It restricts, uh, trade. I'm not sure that's something we can do here. The, uh, some of these other things, I don't know. I just, um, you know, the pole lights, it looks like it's going to be all lighted and all this. I just think it's the wrong place for this thing, and I'm not sure that, where it should be located, but, uh, there's some comment in here from property owners about this is a, kind of a gateway to that area of the city, uh, you know, the county, and we're allowing this property in there. It just seems to me like it's, uh, going to be an eyesore right from the beginning. Uh, I, I don't support it. I think it's a, it just isn't the wrong place. And, uh, just some of the comments that I read in here about some of the property owners, um, I just, I don't think it's a good thing, so that's my opinion. I'll be voting no.
Commissioner, I, and I certainly can address a couple of those things unless you want.
Go ahead.
Okay. The, the timeframe involved here is, is one of the things that kind of prompted the discussion at the Planning Commission regarding, um, you know, whether this should be a, kind of a permitted use or, or a special use. Part of the, the advantage of having this as a special use and having conditions is that it helps you to frame things so that it's, it's manageable for the county, what's in the long-term best interest of, of not only the county, but also the surrounding property owners. And some of the, some of the concerns that were expressed by one of the property owners to the south across Center Street was that ultimately the development of that property would be residential, and that may be 10 to 15 years down the road. And so in looking at this, it, it appeared that the applicant was really kind of in that timeframe. And so the one application, or excuse me, the one condition, which is number one, having this special use permit only apply to this particular landowner at this particular use type right now, would make sense in the, in the entire context of that conversation that was, that was held out at the Planning Commission and the concerns of that landowner. So if, for example, this particular landowner, or this particular use in, in Orion Land Management, if that, if they wanted to sell it, the understanding was that, okay, if, if you're going to sell it to somebody, then this, this particular use of that property is going to stop.
Well, I, did you have a lawyer give you an opinion that that...
Yes, yes. Bernie Mombachet with the county attorney's office did, did review this and, and...
What if you substituted, uh, that language and said that this special use permit expires January 1, 2020? I mean, if you give it a date, nobody can argue.
I'm, I'm going to defer that question to the, um, to the applicants.
Well, it just seems like that makes it really, that makes it very clear that this special use permit is gone, it expires, and that, you know, that's what I would see. I mean, I'm looking at further comments in here, and they're going to be putting up a, if everybody hasn't read this, they're going to be putting a, um, "The area including the proposed buildings will be enclosed by a six-foot chain link fence with commercial-grade woven polyurethane screening along West Center Road and the East property line." Wow, that's going to be really cool. I think that's really awful. I think it's a big mistake. I think you ought to change that first thing, that this thing expires in January 1st, 2025 or something, and then it's clear. I, I wouldn't want to try to be the one to, if this guy says, "I, again, I'm selling it and I don't care what it says." I, I don't know, I just, this is not going to be very pretty. I'll quit talking again.
Commissioner Kraft?
Commissioner Boyle made some very good points there. The, the thing is, when I was on the city council, the, having 10 or sometimes even 20 conditions on a special use permit were not uncommon. In this case, item one, we already took care of. That was that we create, or we passed the previous issue, correct?
Your passing of the, of the previous issue simply, simply allows the special use permit to be considered.
I agree that the woven fences are not beautiful, but we're looking at, what, 120 feet, is it? I'll have to come back and look.
That I'm not, I'd have to look that up and see exactly how, how far that is.
I, I had read everything earlier and I was re-scanning. 120, oh, three buildings, 120, okay. I don't see how, can somebody answer how long, how large the lot is? How long the fence will be?
120 feet.
A second.
Is it 120 feet?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Okay, so that's the length of my lot. Um, that, that amount is okay. If it's, if it's 360 feet, it can be quite annoying. But, but it's not unusual to have in the, when I was on the city council, in the special use permit, that it is not transferable, 'cause special use permits were not transferable. in the city. They expire when you change the use or change the owner. At least that's the way I remember it. And that's my comments.
I think the special use permit is the way to go. I mean, we've done a couple of those, and I just remember one of the areas, another area out in my district that we did one, actually was put into use because then, as Kent was pointing out, you talk with and are able to address the neighbors or citizens' comments or concerns of a development out there. And so, these conditions, at least some of them, were set upon, or in the special use permit for those very reasons. And so, to me, that's a good thing, and there's more control. One of the things we could add, as we did to the other ones, is your monitoring of any complaints on a yearly basis, and then report those to the county board. That's pretty much a given, but if it's there in writing, that also gives the citizens in that area a little bit more of a comfort zone to know that somebody's watching. But again, for this particular type of use for it, I think the special use permit is a very good way to go. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on this item?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bob Daley. I'm at First National Tower, 1601 Dodg Street. I'm here on behalf of the developer and purchaser, Orion Land Management. And Mike Sorenson, one of the owners of Orion Land, is here too, in case there are any specific questions. I'll just kind of start from a little background and try to address the issues that have been raised. Orion Land Management currently has one other business, and that is, they own an island called Vensal Island in Sarpy County. And the primary business there is, they have a lot of lots that are along the river, and those lots are leased out to RV owners. Because of flood reasons, those vehicles have to be moved in the fall and the winter. And most of those people are looking for a place to put their vehicles in the winter. So it's sort of a captive audience we have there. They're looking for a place to park their vehicles during the winter. We found a place to put them. So because of that, we're not storing junk, we're storing vehicles that people, you know, that are important to their lives, important to their vacations. So it's not a junkyard, it's strictly for people who already have the vehicles. We originally wanted to operate under MU3, under a special use permit. We only had one objector, and that was the owner to the south of us that operated quarry. And you'll see that they're actually operating under a conditional use permit. And they're, they kind of raised the same concern, is this going to be a junkyard? We spent a lot of time talking to them, talking about the fence, what we're actually going to do there. And we alleviated their concerns, and their other concern was, they didn't like the rezoning because since MU3 was a more intense use, they said, well, sure, an RV storage lot is fine, but you might change your mind and do something else that we don't like. So that's kind of where we came up with the plan. We'll stick with MU2, and, and they won't have to worry about any more intense uses. I want to talk about what it's going to look like there. We're going to put up a fence. That is about the only improvement that's going to be made to the property, a woven fence. And our site plan shows potentially new buildings. That's probably unlikely because of the great elevation increases we have to make, and that's really expensive. That could happen, it seems a little unlikely at this point. In any event, those are pushed really far back in the site. I don't think anybody can barely see them from the road. There are two existing buildings right now that are used kind of part-time for the Venice Antique Mall. They'll continue in business for a while, but that'll be terminated probably next spring when we want to start remodeling those buildings for indoor storage. So all we're going to do is put up a fence, put up the lights for security purposes. The county was very strict with us, that the lights have to be focused strictly down so there's no light pollution. And that's not a problem, that technology's easy. We're not going to put any paving in. The roads for bringing in the vehicles, the drivelanes, we'll call them, are going to be a mesh with crushed rock on it. And the advantage to that is, is we don't create any impervious coverage, so we don't have any runoff problems. The thing about the fence is, I think that our site plan shows that fairly close to the road, we're actually going to push that quite a bit further back now from the road. And then, we're going to have landscaping in front of that. And that's one of the things that the county department required, was a landscaping plan. We've submitted a narrative of that, not a drawing yet. So even the fence is going to be shielded from the road. And I don't think we're going to disturb the neighbors because the one neighbor who had one concern that we're aware of and that we've talked about runs a quarry across the road, so it's not like the most beautiful neighborhood right there. To the other side is a landscaping business. Otherwise, we're surrounded by ag and also by a gas station. There's also other storage units in the, in the area nearby. So I think our impact and our footprint, our effect on the area is, is very minor, and I think will frankly be unnoticed.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I'd like, like to ask Mr. Holmes, the, there's some comments in here by Richard Anderson, I believe he's, I know he's an attorney by the address that he gave, and I know who he is. He talks about, let's see, he represents owners, property owners to the south of the proposed permit, G&amp;G Manufacturing and the Grasky Family Limited Partnership. One of the things he says is, I'd like to ask you, point number four is, he says the MU2 district provides for residential office and retail, is that correct? What does MU2 allow?
Yes, yes. Basically, does not have, have the industrial component that the MU3 district would have.
Okay, so.
So it's less intensive.
Quite a bit.
Yes.
When you move to the MU3, he says, it provides commercial and industrial activities. Use types include bodywork, light manufacturing, auto repair, convenience storage, custom manufacturing, and truck turnables. This is not exactly what has been suggested as land use for an area proposed for a beautification highway. Has it been proposed for a beautification highway?
Those are his words, not.
Okay. Well, I knew they were, I was asking. Is there a trail nearby? People run on or?
Not there. I think the closest recreational component right now would be the Elkhorn River.
Okay.
And some of the recreational aspects near that.
All right. The, he also talks about, well, he says it's a significant change, which I would agree, from a residential, commercial to a more industrial use. Is there a comprehensive plan out there somewhere that speaks to the use of this land?
Yes.
And what does it say now?
Categorize that particular area as neighborhood, commercial slash residential. And it's, this particular use type would be consistent with that plan.
Manufacturing or whatever it is, the industrial would be?
No, 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 no. The proposed use, not, when you're looking at Mr. Anderson's comment, he is speaking about the MU3, which would, would have some of those commercial industrial uses. And that, that would not necessarily be consistent with the comprehensive plan as it's designed right now.
Okay. Are you saying then that the proposal that we're discussing here today does, does follow the comprehensive?
It would fit within the context of that, yes.
Okay, all right. What about the hours of operation, excuse me, I think they close at 11 o'clock at night? Is that correct? Excuse me. I saw something in there about a closing at 11 o'clock.
I'll have the applicant.
Okay, I just don't know what's going on over there until 11.
This is Bob Daley again, addressing that comment. During the daytime, there may be a security guard there, but after hours, I think maybe after 5:00, there is no security guard there. Each renter is issued an access card or an access number. So if you decide you want to bring your RV in at night, at 10 o'clock at night, you can do that. You'll be the only person there. You'll key yourself in, you'll park your vehicle, you'll key yourself out, and that's it. So there is no operations there, per se. And you figure probably in October, November would be when a lot of vehicles are brought in, and then that's pretty much it. It's just vehicles sitting there all winter, except for some people that want to go south occasionally. So when you say hours of operation, that just means somebody can get in and out. It's no different than if my building has hours of operation till 6:00. Sure, a few people might come in and out at 11:00, but there's no activity going on. So I don't want to be misled by hours of operation.
Okay. Could I ask you while you're there, Mr. Daley, was there, it seems like when I read this last night, I came across some reluctance to landscape. Is there any?
No, not that I know of. We've actually sent a landscape plan in, in a narrative form, not a drawing.
Okay.
Do you mind if I address your MU3 comment again?
Please do.
I just want to make sure there's no misunderstanding. We're not rezoning MU3. That was our original plan.
Okay.
That's what Mr. Anderson was concerned about.
Okay.
So we said, we'll throw the whole MU3 thing out the window.
All right, I misunderstood, thank you. Okay, well, there's other comments here from Mr. Travis Smith, who lives nearby, and I just, I won't continue this. I am opposed to it, and I'll be voting no.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, I have a couple of quick questions. One is the impervious area. You're not planning to pave the whole thing, you're going to be using gravel, is that what you said?
That's correct, we're not going to pave anything.
Okay, good. And, and in the, not knowing the lay of the land, but if there's a slope to it, even with an impervious, even with a crushed rock area that's not impervious, water can run off. In the landscaping you're going to have around the perimeter, is that designed to be like a rain garden, so to speak?
To be a what? Oh, a rain garden?
A rain garden.
Didn't have any plans for that. I kind of wanted to make it, you know, sort of native species that are going to function well there.
Well, that, that works very well with a rain garden, something to absorb the water, to not allow it to have any runoff. Kent, could you address that?
Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. There will not be a significant amount of runoff here at all. I mean, it's very flat, and outside of the one building site that's elevated, I mean, there really isn't much of a slope at all. So the use of native plants is very, very conducive to helping to absorb.
Because I know you're very much into the rain garden and the, yes.
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Kent, do you have a problem? Mike's suggestion seemed like a reasonable one to maybe say in here, you could add it to line one or something, that the expiration is 2022, gives him 10 years, something like that, 2021, whatever.
Personally, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's the, you know, the applicant has to kind of react to that.
You know, they are, we're actually surrounded by conditional use permits at this point that don't have that sort of schedule on them, so I don't know why that would affect this guy. We could be agreeable to it. We prefer to be, you know, the nature of 15 years. Given the nature of the economy now, you know, I personally have a hard time believing there's going to be development out in that direction for quite a long time. When there is, of course, we'd rather upgrade residential ourselves, it's going to be, you know, a lot more profitable for us. But if we can make it 15 years, yeah, we would be happy to put that in as a condition.
Yeah, I'd go with that suggestion, that we maybe make the change to 2025.
Maybe 2026.
26. I'm in 2010.
Yeah.
26. I was adding it on to 2010.
I always do what the chairperson says. Kind of a little puppet over here.
You better cut those strings.
Is that 2026, okay then?
So the motion needs to be made to amend this.
Well, we're still in the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Is there any other, Commissioner Morgan, anything, Commissioner Duda?
Quick question, I don't remember ever dating a special use permit before, I don't necessarily, if the applicant is.
We have.
Yes, we have.
Present.
For example, the landfill.
Okay, all right, all right, fine. And there would be no saying in 15 years that they couldn't come back and ask for an extension?
Absolutely could come back and, at any time.
Fine, thank you.
And again, the only other thing I would add is that on a yearly basis, Kent, you report any complaints to the board, however we worded, however we word that, make it like a number 11. That Environmental Services will monitor complaints and report to the board on a yearly basis.
Okay.
We are still in the public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this application? Commissioner Boyle?
I was only going to add that I appreciate Mr. Morgan's suggestion, and the applicant be willing to do that. I think this gives us a chance to, whoever is here in, in 15 years, if something needs to happen one way or the other, if it hasn't worked out, it'll give them a chance to redo it. And I think it's a very, very good idea, so I appreciate it.
No other comments, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make the motion to approve as amended.
Second. Just, just for clarification's sake, in the, in the resolution, number one, will be amended to then read, the special use permit applies only to the applicant, Orion Land Management LLC, and will expire November 1, 2026. And you're adding an item number 11. Department of Environmental Services will monitor complaints and report any such complaints back to the board on an annual basis.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I would like to clarify, there was so much silence, I made the motion to approve, but I'm not going to be voting for it. It was so silent, I thought, well.
It was awkward, we were trying to figure out how to work the motion.
So I want to explain that before everybody looks at me, says, well, you are really insane.
Well, nobody says that, they just kind of know it.
Please vote.
I'm going to roll today.
Thank you, and thank you for being here today.
Thanks, Kent.
We will move to committees, first one being the budget, Commissioner Morgan and Kraft.
Last week, we had a finance committee with some of the staff, our chairperson, and Mark, and myself, and we're going to have another one today, trying to work at making certain that we can hold the line on our present mill levy, and that's the goal. So I'm not sure there's anything to add to that. Mark?
We have the report as presented, that's the only thing I can think of to add. We've been, we've been going carefully over numbers, looking at the consequences of what happens if we cut. We're looking at alternatives. We have the Blue Ribbon Committee going on, studying the health center and the community mental health, and the long-term assisted living, and the, you know, just, just the whole package. And we're trying very hard, we're hoping we can succeed, and we're going to do everything we can to succeed to not raise a mill levy, although we've had some curves thrown at us by the state. Thank you.
Next is the Child and Youth. Just to note that there will be, not be a Child and Youth Services Standing Committee November 1, but it will be held next Tuesday, November 8, at 2:30 in Room 903. Next is the Community Services, Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. We have one application, however, I'll say what it is, but the applicant is asking to lay this over for two weeks. This is a special use permit for the Eldon Curtis Arch Diocesan, how do you pronounce it?
Diocesan.
Arch Diocesan. For a Presbyterian, I appreciate the clarification.
That's right.
You camp and retreat.
From an RC.
Anyhow, the applicant is asking to lay this over for two weeks. So I would move to lay this item over for two weeks.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'll be voting to lay it over, but I hope we have some response to our questions about what they're going to do to protect people, what if they have a couple hundred people out there and bad weather occurs. I hope we get that before Tuesday morning.
Okay, we'll make note of that. And Kent, can you just make sure, we're holding this over for two weeks as requested, but Commissioner Boyle would like the answers to what their plan is.
Shelter.
For a shelter in case of bad weather.
We had sent that revised resolution out to them just a few days after the last time we handed on there, and finally heard back from them last Friday, said, well, we've got a couple of questions and clarifications on that. And basically, the question was, do, since they haven't started on all of the modifications and the new buildings and stuff out there, does that apply, does that storm shelter thing apply to the existing stuff out there? Because they, they had a concern that, well, if they haven't started doing all that stuff, if they had, if you were going to require them as part of this to go up and make some upgrades to, for storm shelters and stuff right now, before they even started on
even started on some of the other, the new buildings that were proposed, that that might, that could potentially be an issue for them.
Okay, well, I can tell you what I'd like to see, and that is that when they open the facility, that they have adequate shelter for the number of people who will be there.
I don't think there's any pushback at all from them on that. I think they fully agree. That was part of the discussion at the planning commission meeting, that they understood the importance of storm shelters as they develop this property. I think there's concern that I heard last Friday was that, well, if, if the county board wants us to now go and make improvements just for storm shelters for the existing buildings, then I'm not sure they're prepared to do that.
Right. I just want to be sure that we don't approve something, and then it turns out that, you know, we have a tornado in two years, and there's 200 kids that are injured or killed, and we're sitting here going, gee, why didn't we do something? So I would like to see, what, as I said, as simply as I can say it, is that I'd like, when they open, I'd like to, they have to be sure they have adequate shelter for the number of people that are on their property.
My understanding right now is that they, they do use that facility on a limited basis, given the, you know, the, the number of buildings that they have right now. And there are some lower levels that provide some shelter right now. But when they go and, and do the expanded, the additional buildings and so on, that is their full intent to follow those recommendations for storm shelters and to have all those facilities available.
Okay.
So we'll clarify that in the resolution. We'll have that back in front of you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, there is a motion to lay over for two weeks. Please vote. Next is the human resources. The first item is the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. There are no questions or comments.
You know, I'm sorry to have so many comments today, but when you look at this, it gives us the position title and department and the vacancies and all that sort of thing when it's posted. How does this, how does this fit with our freeze committee?
Whichever one is approved, and nothing goes on here unless the hiring freeze, it went through the hiring.
So all these have been approved?
Except for there's an ongoing for dispatch, or no, for correctional officers.
Okay.
And nurses at the health center.
Okay.
And I thought there was one more. But anyway, those are ongoing. Those are always posted when needed.
Okay, all right.
And the other ones, I mean, I can remember pretty much most of them coming through the hiring freeze.
Okay, thank you.
Next are legislative issues. The first one is a resolution to support withholding court costs from cash bonds posted by defendant in criminal cases. And Rick, if you just want to give a brief synopsis of that one?
I know that John Friend, the clerk of the district court, is present, as well as his chief deputy, Barb Carpenter, and they were kind enough to help me walk through this. What this would allow us to do is when criminal defendants post cash bonds for their criminal case and they're subsequently found guilty or enter a guilty plea, before we would return their cash bond, we would be allowed to take our court cost out of there. Our court costs are generally right in the neighborhood of $80. A subset of that $80 in court costs are filing fees that the county pays to the state of roughly $35. And what we do is we would take the $82 out, and then we'd return the remainder of their cash bond to them.
Did John or Barb want to add anything? This was one that was brought over from last year too, wasn't it? Or is this Lancaster?
I don't believe, I don't believe we've had either of these two legislative items in front of this board before. I do expect both legislative items to be on the Lancaster County legislative initiatives.
Hi, Barb.
Good morning. Commissioner Barbara Carpenter, Chief Deputy Clerk of the District Court. We, there's about 4,000 new criminal cases opened every year. And out of those, there's a $35 filing fee that goes directly down to the state at the time of the case is opened. We can only recoup that cost if we can take it out of the bond. And there are occasions where we aren't able to do that. This would enable us to have a statutory reason to be able to do that. And along with the $35 that we would recoup, that we've already sent down to the state for filing fees, we also have another 35 that we collect for the county. And at this particular time, there are many instances that we do not recoup that or get that either. So out of the 4,000 cases, if, our filing fees are actually $70. That includes the 35 for the state and 35 for the county. You know, that's, that's $280,000 right there. And we recoup approximately about, not quite half of that. And we always carry around $3 million worth of bonds on the books that are here. So it would be, I believe it would, would enable the county to recoup some, some fees that they don't get now.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. Barbara, I wanted to ask you a kind of a question that's maybe a little bit out of the blue, but the, it's my understanding that the county attorney has to pay when his office files charges. Is, do you have ballpark figure on what amount we have to pay to the state to prosecute the accused?
Well, it's 35 for the filing fee.
Right.
And there are other fees that are involved. Nothing that gets charged to the county attorney's budget, but there are things that, you know, there's some sheriff fees, certified copy fees, things along that nature. So a fairly simple criminal cost would be around $122 to $150.
Okay, and so the number of filings, do you think it approaches a quarter to a million or a little higher that we pay to the state?
Uh, well.
Anywhere near that?
No, the filing fee that goes to the state is around 35, it's $35.
Okay. Well, sometime I'd like to see what that figure might be, because to me, it's pretty bizarre that we have to pay money to the state to bring charges against someone who's accused of breaking a state law. Thank you.
If I may interject, I think last year or the year before, Commissioner Boyle, is that the one that you brought up, wanting us to take a position to have it wiped out?
Yeah.
The 35 for the state?
Yeah.
Rick and I were talking when we were putting these on the agenda, that I'm almost positive. It was during one of our legislative discussions, but it never, it never came back. And so while this is on the, collecting it from the bond, I don't know if maybe at some point you want to work with Rick and come back to try to get rid of that $35 going to the state.
That'd be nice.
So if you want to just make a note of that, if you decide to bring it back. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I, I appreciate a little bit of clarification. This is a no-brainer to me. I know Commissioner Rogers had some concerns, and I'm sorry that he had to leave and isn't able to voice those concerns, because to me, it seems like we've got a person sitting in jail that, or, I mean, in the, in the system, that at the end of the day, we owe them money, they owe us money, we pay them, they don't pay us. So it's kind of a no-brainer to withhold what they owe us before we, we return the money. But I'm, you just threw out like, would this include the certified copies and all that? Would there?
No.
What is the most that we will withhold from somebody's bond?
Well, it could vary on a criminal case. It depends on, on the number of times served. It really does vary. The average case is about 122, 50 to 150.
All right.
Now, out of that, $35 of it has already gone to the state.
Okay, thank you. I will be supporting this. It seemed like a pretty simple, straightforward one to me.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Submove.
Second.
Please vote. Item B, oh, back to item A. Commissioner Morgan thought that maybe that 35 that goes to the state could be talked about at our tri-county retreat as well. So if we want to put that under the legislative items for that, that was a good idea. Item B, resolution to review all county fees and raise where appropriate. And again, this was Lancaster's, I believe. And my understanding from talking to Rick was that the city can raise theirs as they seem fit. But we haven't raised ours since.
A lot of these fees haven't been raised since the early 80s. And we need the permission of the legislature to do so. This would just ask NACO to take a look at all of our fees and to make recommendations where appropriate.
So with that, is there a motion? Commissioner Kraft?
Do we be asking the legislature for permission to set our own fees?
Yeah.
That can be part of it.
Yeah. I would like to see that added on there. Even if the chances are slim and nil.
They'll never trust us.
So if anybody would like to join me with that.
I agree.
I think we just added to having NACO look at it as that being a part of it.
Right, very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, it's, they'll never, they will never let us do that. And we've tried it several times. We tried to get a home rule county bill passed, it wouldn't give us that. We tried to get Douglas County set aside as a special municipal classification county, they wouldn't give us that. So they won't give the city anything either, you know, just a little bit. Of course, they yanked their occupation tax back. So the state wants to have their hands around our neck, the legislature does, and the governor. And that's where they are. So I, it's okay to put it in, but why don't we put in something about the Easter bunny while we're at it?
You know, that's a good point. We could put the, he deserves his say.
Yes, he does.
No, even though.
Are you done with me?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Kraft?
Even though the chances are slim and nil, each year of the legislators, each year, the thought process of the legislators differ, depending a lot of times on, on local needs and everything. So each year, it's a different legislation, a different legislature. And we need to approach it as many times as we can, because one of these times, the timing might be just right.
You never know it. That's right.
Okay, there was a motion to approve the resolution with the friendly amendment to that. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Just a moment.
Last item on human resources is the approval of amendment to the current labor contract with IBEW Local 1483, the supervisors. Is there a motion to approve? Please vote. Any questions or comments? Please vote. There is no need for executive session today.
Sweet.
So I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Please note that the tri-county retreat is November 3rd, down in Lincoln, at the Wilderness Lodge at 9:00 AM. Also note that we will not meet, the board of commissioners will not meet Tuesday, November 8th, so our next scheduled meeting is November 15th. The Decks of County offices will be closed Friday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. And due to the Veterans Holiday, the deadline for submitting items for the November 15th agenda will be due Tuesday, November 8th at 3:00 PM. Was there a second to adjourn? Second. Please vote.